Good morning, I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council, and we're conducting business today's session via teleconference. The meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and will be available later on Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the city's YouTube channel. As a reminder to everyone in the public, work sessions give the council an opportunity to review items on today's agenda, as well as any ordinances and resolutions that have been routed for the council's consideration. These meetings are informal and no official actions are taken. Our 11 o'clock meeting will have an update from EMA and also from the Fire Chief of Gaston. Our agenda items for today's meeting, we have three items of unfinished business. Item 9A and B are ordinances reusing property located at 107 and 109 Virgin Street and 627 Gaston Avenue. We have item 9C is a resolution amending the Resolution Number R-403-04 regarding the steps in the pay plan. And item 10 is a resolution authorizing a change order to bid number 34 or 8 regarding the Alabama City Center Parking Project. Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Greater Gaston Housing Authority to continue the community or in it policing program in the public housing community for fiscal year 2022. We have our item number 12 is an ordinance approving the American Rescue Plan Fund Budget that is being presented for first reading. Are there any questions or comments for council's concerning today's agenda? So we will move to our pre-council file. We have items that have been routed to the mayor and forward to the, and forward to the city council. We also, our first resolution is authorizing a lease agreement with Mental Health America at Ewok County, and this was for the space on the second floor of the Gaston Public Library, and the amount is $100 per month, and the term is for one year with the option to renew for five additional years. I'll call on Craig Scott from the library to discuss the lease.
Thank you, Dr. Toles and council members. The, the library is very excited to be going into partnership with Mental Health America, which is an agency supported by United Way here in the county. As everybody, I think, knows, the library is a benign place where nothing ever happens. No, that, that's not the case. And Mental Health America, having their representative here, Betty Willoughby is, is their person. Having her located in an office that we do not use just makes a lot of sense. She offers classes such as parenting, anger management, that the public will be able to take advantage of here. And, and when, and when we have some problems, we'll have an expert in the building to help us manage those. In the past, my staff has been trained on mental, on dealing with mental health issues, but we are not experts. So it just makes sense all around for us to go into partnership with her, and we're looking forward to that with your help.
Any questions from the council members? Is this lease for one year just to see how things would go? And, and as a result of that, then you'll consider the five-year lease?
Exactly right, Dr. Toles. I wanted to schedule this just to, just for a year, just to make sure we're, we're, we're all together, and I'm sure we will be, and then we'll renew it for five. I would like to, if I could, ask that this be considered as, that we get this done today, if possible.
What is the council's decision on that?
Sounds good to me.
Do we have to wait till next week? All right. Councilman Worthy, then would you bring that up?
Be happy to.
All right.
If I can find it on my thing.
Okay. All right, our next resolution is approving a 10% city match in the amount of $35,000 for safety improvements to the railroad crossing on East Megan Boulevard at Sixth Street North. And I'll call on city engineer William Heath Williamson to explain.
Yes, ma'am, this is an agreement with Aldott. For safety improvements at the railroad tracks at North 6 and Megan Boulevard. This came from project preparations on their side. They, their side being Aldott's side to resurface Highway 431 within the Gaston City limits. I think currently that's scheduled for next fiscal year, should that remain as, as it is today. And in that, they go through quite a bit of safety checks. One of those was that railroad crossing. With, this is the railroad crossing that we're all familiar with. We had worked on that ourselves. After a failure in that roadway surface, I guess a few years ago now, two or three years, we went in and resurfaced it to aid in that for our residents. Although it is a state right-of-way, and of course you're dealing with the railroad right-of-way there. So, long-term, much better fix, very happy about this. This will, or the full application that they've put in for will, will actually replace the mast median signals. That's the steel structures that go over the roadway that actually hold the traffic signals that you see in each lane or that line up with each lane. They currently aren't long enough, and so it will be extended, or I guess a better term is be replaced with a new structure that will cover each lane. It will also have two cantilever signals to stop the traffic. And then finally, to complete the surface that we drive on, there will be concrete panels. You now will either see asphalt between the tracks on each side, or you will see the rubberized track like what we have on Locust Street. And the better long-term fix for a roadway with this amount of volume are the precast concrete panels, which is what this is being applied for. So, very happy to see that. It'll also have the preemption for the signals, meaning the, when a train is coming through, it interacts with the traffic signals to stop traffic and kick everything into action. So, we were, again, happy to see this, highly recommended by my department. And so our only requirement is to provide the 10% match.
Okay, is that the railroad near the Honda car dealership?
Yes, ma'am.
That area where they are?
That's the main one. This is actually a railroad spur that goes into the old Goodyear property.
Okay, right.
There in Goodyear and the Tamara Honda, yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes, okay, all right. I wanted to make sure, well, that's good, because there've been a lot of cars that said they've messed up going over that railroad track. So it's been an improvement already?
Yes, ma'am. And this, my understanding is this work would, would take place during the resurfacing when that occurs.
Okay. Councilman Worthy? And then Councilman Bag?
You remember also, Doc, when we went out and met with the railroad there, and they was talking about they would have to dig it all up? Is this part of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll completely remove the substructure. They'll, while we do that, and they did that the first time when we worked with them, they'll actually dig out the substructure, make sure none of the substructure needs to be replaced at the same time, and then rather than go back with crushed stone and asphalt, it will be these precast concrete panels. They lock together, gives a little bit of moveability in their design. But yes, that, that all takes place at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Bag?
Thank you, Madam President. Heath, two questions. One, a few years ago, when that stretch of road, that patch of road was in terrible shape. I know the city jumped in and spent about $40,000, if my memory serves correct, on the state road. And if I remember, they were gonna pay us that money back somehow or another through the, you know, through the coming year or something like that. Then the second part, help me understand how, I didn't think we, the city could spend city funds on state roads. And so how does this, how are we able to spend $350,000 on a, on a, on a state highway?
The visit, the, the city would be spending the 10% match. The, actually a federal fund, this is the grant application, would be for the estimated $250,000 to $350,000. I guess, go back to your first question. We never received a reimbursement statement from Aldott or anybody else regarding the repayment for our funds that we expended. What happened was, again, claim after claim after claim. I think a lot of the council folks, the mayor's office, even some of our local representatives were called again and again because the track surface, the, the roadway surface continued to deteriorate. We would forward those claims to Aldott, we would forward those claims to the railroad. No one would act. It's not our right-of-way, it is a state right-of-way, and of course, the railroad right-of-way. And essentially, as it continued on, nothing happened. We finally agreed to go ahead, do what we needed to do to get a permit in place, to make a temporary repair, knowing that it would be a temporary repair to assist. Went forward with that, and so I guess to go forward with your, with my understanding of your, your second question, we can expend money on a state right-of-way, the state will certainly allow us to do that and appreciate us doing that. We just have to gain the permits to do that. We, we don't have the right to go and freely work on a railroad right-of-way or a state right-of-way without permit and coordinations, et cetera. And so we had the permit process, we had both entities there on site. In fact, you can't work on the railroad, within the railroad right-of-way without them present. They had crews present the entire time, et cetera. And so that's how we got to where we are today.
Okay, I think I understand what you're saying. It, so we didn't get paid back for the money we spent a few years ago, probably won't get paid back for that, but we will help. Now, this, this, this grant we're applying for, did I, is it a, I don't have anything in paper, so I'm, I'm not reading anything. So this is a federal money that, that, that we're gonna get?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And actually Aldott is applying for it on our behalf. It was a really tight timeline, which, again, my apologies for no warning. Last Tuesday, after our council meeting, I had a call from Aldott, and granted, it was a good welcome call. It explained this process and that they needed the paperwork in their hands to forward by today. And so if we don't get it by today, unfortunately, it goes away, is my understanding of that anyway. So I said, man, that is a tight timeline, I will do my best. And thankfully, all parties involved, city clerks, legal office, et cetera, did their portions to get it in front of you to take into consideration.
All right, I think it's wonderful. I drive that road frequently, and it is, it'll knock the filling out of your teeth. So it, it'll be good to get it nice and smooth, and I'm glad to vote in favor of doing that. Yay Aldott, yay Megan Boulevard.
Do you need this today?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Worthy?
I have a question. Now, uh, this is about 411. Have you spoken with them anymore about the timeline for paving? Because this is getting worse.
We had, we had our TCC meeting, which is our bi-monthly meeting with surrounding entities and Aldott. And that question came up during that meeting this last Thursday. The representative from Aldott did not have the direct answers for us. So we did request that they provide that for us at our next MPO meeting, which is this Thursday. So my knowledge, as it stands right now, of course, everyone knows they have milled that surface. They have completed some patching work, they have put back some of the traffic signals. You'll see that they cut those in for a short time, the, the signals were a little out of whack. What happens is they go back to their default settings, so they don't read oncoming traffic from sideways or side, side drives coming in. They are also completing the concrete work. There's a good bit of extensive concrete work that will happen up and down through the city limits of Gaston. Probably seen some of that, and I know I've seen it in front of McDonald's, I've seen it in front of Villa Fiesta, that area, and it'll continue on down. And so they will not put the resurfaced, or the new surface back, the wearing surface, until that concrete works complete, but I don't know their timeline to do that. That's what we hope to gain at Thursday's meeting.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Bag, would you bring up this resolution?
Yes, ma'am, be glad to, thank you.
We have a resolution authorizing a permit agreement with Alabama Department of Transportation, and this relates to maintenance of the traffic signals at Highway 77 and Transport Street. I'll call on that city engineer to explain again.
Yes, ma'am, so this is actually for traffic signal modification, as you had stated, right there at Transport Street, at the Jack's location. This is the proposed location, well, the north side of that intersection is the proposed location for a racetrack. So, should everything move forward as they expect? We've held this permit application to make sure it's gonna go forward. I'll indicate that it should go forward, and so this is why I'm bringing it to you today. An outside entity is not, my understanding, an outside entity is not.
Bag's gonna bring up the Aldott one.
Request one of these permits, so it has to go through the city for long-term maintenance, which comes through us. However, the, the actual initial construction, everything involved would be completed by that development for racetrack.
Okay. Any questions to the engineer? We'll go back to a resolution, it's item number two on my sheet. And this is a, this is authorizing an agreement with the CDG engineer and associate to provide construction, engineering, and inspection service on an as-needed on a call basis. Williamson?
Yes, ma'am.
City engineer, will you explain that? This, this agree, this inspection agreement?
Yes, ma'am, this is similar to ones I have brought you before. This is for construction, engineering, and inspection services. And as you stated, it is on an as-needed on-call basis. Essentially lets us have the master agreement in place to react quickly when we need to. What prompted this is, we've had COVID leads, folks affected, just like everyone has. We've had one of our chief inspectors was out for an extended time, had quite a battle with it there. At, at this time, we have more construction projects than we have inspectors. We tighten our belt, diversify out as we can with our own folks and cover. But should worst case happen, that leaves a big project without an inspector, or at least one there not full-time, which is not good for us. And so giving us a way to react appropriately, getting a master agreement in place, set up with, with this company, and I have some with others as well, that should we become short-staffed, based on whatever the need is, I can call them and get an on-site inspector out there full-time, bring them up to speed, just as they are a city employee, yet they are contracted, they can come and go as we need them to, and they agree to do that as well.
Questions from the council? Mr. Heath, do you need this today?
Uh, yes, ma'am, if you don't mind, I do need this today.
Okay. Mr. Heath, and one about, let's see. Councilman Reed, would you bring that one up?
Sure.
What about the permit agreement with Aldott? And on the traffic signal on 77 and Transport Street? Do you need that today?
It doesn't have to be today. I've given them the timeline for the full process to go through your normal pre-council and council in successive weeks.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll move to item five on my list. It's a resolution authorizing a lake shore permit with Alabama Power Company that is required for bank stabilization along the Riverwalk at Couso Landing. Once more, I'll call on the city engineer to explain.
Tired of hearing from me today. So this is, as you stated, a bank stabilization proposed project that we will have coming up along the Riverwalk, just about from Buffalo Wild Wings down about 250 feet, 260 feet. We've had some major erosion occur over the last year with all the flooding that has happened. We've been watching for a while. This is more of a preemptive strike to stop that, and so we can go in and stabilize it with some large rock riprap. But to do that, needed to obtain the shoreline management, a lake shore permit in place to let Alabama Power know what's going on and to make sure we're covered on their side, which we are. They have no issue with it, just need to go through the terms and conditions and get the permit in place.
All right. Our next item is authorizing an agreement with Rafa House to provide 10 beds for city inmates in the amount of $1,666.67 per month. I'll call on the finance director, Ms. Lisa Rossa, to explain.
Yes, ma'am, good morning.
Good morning.
So this is just our normal contract with Rafa that we do every year. This is for $20,000 for the year, and it's vegged it, and we do not need this today.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council? Our next item is a resolution amending Resolution Number R-403-04 regarding the pay plan and Resolution Number R-463-04 regarding job classification. Again, I'll call on Lisa Rossa for the explanation of this resolution.
Yes, ma'am, so as we have discussed already with each council member in their budget meetings, this is changing one job classification, which is the campground manager. It's going from a classification range of three to a job classification range of five. Then there are seven jobs that are being added. Actually, the resolution says in the first paragraph under Section 1, it says, "are amended by changing the following job classifications." But actually, these are not changes, this is adding the following job classifications, because we do not have these jobs, these are new jobs. So we have an environmental services clerk, job classification number 106, range 3. A secretary to clerk's office, job classification number 116, range 8. Property housing code inspector, job classification number 240, pay range 10. Construction inspector, job classification number 247, pay range 12. Deputy director, this is for EMA, job classification number 451, pay range 10. Sports complex manager, job classification number 360, pay range 18. An assistant golf pro, job classification number 393, pay range 5. And again, we do not need this today.
Any questions to Ms. Rossa? We have an, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2022 budgets. Once again, I'll call on Ms. Rossa to explain.
So this is our 2022 budget, there again, that we have discussed in detail in budget meetings with each council member. I'm gonna go over just some highlights and details of the budget, since this is actually the, kinda like the first reading of the budget to be introduced. Our revenues and expenditures, actually, I should say total budget this year is $53,207.45. This is up $1,998,450 from last fiscal year. And as we discussed, the increase is from sales and use tax. Our sales and use tax is up tremendously this year, which we're very thankful for, and we hope we stay at that, at that rate. So basically, revenues are up. Our personnel cost is up $1,084,089. We've done a lot of things in this budget with personnel to costs, as we have discussed. The first thing is the pay plan that we're asking for you to vote on today. This is taking off five steps and adding three steps on the end. This had a twofold purpose on the pay plan. First of all, we were trying to get the starting pay up on our lowest-paid full-time jobs, which come in at $8.98 an hour. So with changing the pay plan, the starting pay on these jobs will now be $10.04. We had 25 full-time employees that made under $10.04, so we had to adjust those 25 employees to the new pay plan. This was a cost of a little over $6,500 on the year. We also gave raises in this budget, four step or a 5% increase for anybody that makes below $25,000. And there is a two-step, 2.5% above anybody that makes above $25,000. There were 31 employees that have been topped out on our pay plan for a number of years now. And so by, again, extending the pay plan, those three steps on the end, this allows for all full-time city employees to get a raise. Also, we increased all part-time, non-full-time, and single employees to $9 an hour. Most of these employees were making $8.25, so now all of these employees will come in at $9 an hour. On our retirement, our retirement is going up. Tier 1 is going from $18,9.93 to $19.2. Tier 2 is from $18.92 to $19.18. This was a cost of a little over $173,000. Our health insurance is also going up this year 7%. As you know, we have a, an ordinance that basically says that employees will pay 20% of the total premium. So, single coverage will be going up from $22.80 to $25.73. Family coverage will be going from $55.66 to $62.82. And there again, all, all the raises will cover this increase in the insurance that the employee will have to pay. The main thing that we're excited about is premium pay. As you're aware, aware, we have the ARP funds that will be asking for consideration for vote today. The ARP funds allows us to give premium pay to essential employees by the interim rule that make less than $46,840 a year. We had 169 employees that qualified for the premium pay through the ARP funds. So what we did is that we're gonna pay all, everybody else that was working during last year, we're gonna pay all full-time and non-full-time employees a premium pay through our general account as well. There were 55 essential employees that made over that threshold that will get paid out of general fund money. There were 209, non, what's considered non-essential full-time employees, and 69 non-full-time employees. So 324 employees will get paid premium, a one-time premium pay out of our general account. It'll be $3,000 for a full-time person and $1,500 for a non-full-time person, and this was a cost of $882,000 to our general account. Overall, when we get through with everything in personnel, our personnel cost to budget for fiscal year 2022 will be 70.14%. And there again, this is probably the best personnel budget that we have had in, meaning, this is my 18th budget, and I would say probably the best personnel budget that we've had in a long, long time. Our operating costs are up $1,702,277. Just to highlight a few things, election expenses had to be added this year at a cost of $120,000. The jail contract, as you have already approved, went up $100,000. Our utility is the biggest place where we're seeing an increase in expenses, and this is mainly because of the Gaston State Sports Complex, which will become operational in next fiscal year. So we increased that up quite a bit. We're adding some software at the cemetery, and of course, we had to put in a budget for the Gaston State Complex. Our capital expenditures are actually down a little bit. We did not have the budget for MPO projects this year. MPO projects are, are all dedicated to South Levitt Street project. But that amount, we have in the account this year, and so we're gonna encumber it and roll it over. So that saved us about $500,000 in budget. Our transfers are down $48,281. Our outside agencies are also down, and there again, we are funding outside agencies in the total amount of, let me find it. The total amount of $1,252,200 for next fiscal year. On debt service, we have payments of a little over $8.7 million for debt service. As I told you all, we have one note, the 2011 A, that has a balloon payment that's due in December, but it will be paying off, so that's gonna free up about $1.8 million in our capital expenditure account for next fiscal year. So we're very excited that we're actually paying off the debt, that's good news. The last two things in the budget is our capital improvement fund. Capital Improvement Fund 1 has a budget of $8.1 million. $6 million of this is dedicated for debt payments. We've dedicated a lot of money, a little over $4.2 million for street resurfacing this year, which we're very excited about as well. And then just your normal building expenditures, that capital building expenditures. that capital building expenditures, equipment comes out of this account as well. But like I said, most of this is leveraged for debt. Your capital improvement two fund has anticipated revenues of seven point two million dollars in it. And there again, the main things to highlight here is the Broad Street Bridge. That's a million-dollar project that we will have going on next year, and it is to resurface the bridge and also for some structural work that will need to be done. The Gaston State Complex, being able to do Phase Two and Phase Three and try to get that project completed next year is also budgeted here. And the Sixth Street Poo, trying to get that poo finished and worked on and get the filtration system redone and get that poo up and running next year as well. We're very excited about this budget. We think it's one of the best budgets we've had in many, many years. So, again, this, of course, is just introduction today. First reading and public hearing will be next week.
Any questions?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. Well, maybe a couple. The, how much does each step represent? Ms. Rossa?
There's one point two five percent between each step. So when you're getting a four-step increase, that's a five percent raise. Two steps would be a two and a half percent raise.
Okay, and so tell me about the firefighters. How much do they start out at?
I don't have that in front of me, Ms. Worthy. I can get that for you, but I do not have that information in front of me. There again, you have to, you have to convert their pay, starting pay, because they do not work a normal forty-hour week. So it's not that simple of an answer, but I would definitely get that to you.
Okay. And you know I don't agree with us not giving the school system any money. So, you know, I told you that in the meeting also. But it looked like to me we could do something better for the fire department. But anyway, we will just have to continue talking about that.
Councilman Back?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Rossa, if you would send me that information on the fire department also, that you're going to send Councilman Worthy, I would appreciate that. And, uh, thank you.
Lisa, I would also like to receive that information. Thank you.
You're welcome. I will.
Lisa, you may as well send it to everybody. But
I'd be glad.
Yeah, but while we're kind of talking about that, let's not forget that there's an ARP budget that represents some level of additional compensation for the firefighters as well. So I don't want, I don't want us to get pigeonholed into looking only at the restructuring of step increases, because there is additional remuneration that's going to be made available to the firefighters in consideration of, you know, just a very difficult year for first responders and firefighters. So again, I think that as we walk through this, I think that needs to be accounted for.
Any other comments?
Madam President, I'd like to echo with Councilman Williams. That was, I was thinking along those same lines. For our first responders that are forced to go in to do their job, firemen, paramedics, police officers that have to go into houses or into car wrecks or things where they don't have a choice, but to maybe be exposed to someone with COVID. And then if they get COVID, and then if they're out sick with COVID, I'd like for us to have a little deeper discussion on how that works with the ARP money as far as paying their time off. I'm not sure I understand everything surrounding that, so I would like to learn a little bit more about that. I've read it, but I probably need some help in making sure that I'm fully understanding what we're doing and what's available.
Are there any other comments?
Madam President, I have one, please.
Yes.
Yes, I just want, while I got everybody together, I want to thank you all for last week, and just praise you for coming through.
Is Mr. Hilton on? And that might be the question I'm going to ask Mr. Hilton. It has to do with the, not the wildlife, but the greenery, the trees at the Riverwalk area, the trail. Do you all cut in that area because it's like it's overgrown, and it can also be a kind of a dangerous situation for people who walk the trail and going around? So I was wanting to know, can that area be trimmed or cut or weeded out in some form? Because it's grown up quite a bit.
So are we talking about the trail of venue or the trail behind the mall?
Uh, no, the trail by the venue.
Yes, ma'am. Parks and Rec maintains that for general purposes. If they need our help and assisting in cutting things back, they'll definitely get ahold of us. But yes, as far as cutting trees or brush or anything back along the trail, we wouldn't want to get off of the trail into the, you know, into the vegetation. But as far as what's hanging over the trail, that could easily be trimmed back.
Okay, all right.
And might be a better person to talk to about that.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
I have a question. Listen, I'm getting more calls. I got one this morning on Forest Cemetery. Can you, is it in the way, I know Parks and Rec handles that, but is it in a way you all could assist? Because from what I understand, they had volunteers to go over there to try to cut some of the grass and stuff over there, but we're getting a lot of complaints on it.
Well, Councilman, I would want to speak for the folks at Parks and Rec. I personally visited Forest Cemetery yesterday. A friend is going to have a funeral there tomorrow, and so I went over to look at things to spruce up maybe a little bit about where she's going to be. And the cemetery looked great. I mean, I have to say, in the area that I went, went in the main gate at the end of Wall Street, went all the way to the back where the mazel lim was, and I was quite surprised. I've been hearing those things too. That's not the public worst entities. But the cemetery's come a long way in the last couple of weeks. I want to give kudos, I guess, to the fine folks at Parks and Rec. Jeff and his crew that are over there have the same issues that we have throughout the city and the county with personnel. But surprisingly, I guess, yesterday, because we hear those same complaints too, I was pleasantly surprised with how it looked yesterday. I will say also, we'll be more than happy to help out in any situation where we can. But remember, with a limited number of employees in any department, if you pull a employee from point A to send to point B, you're no longer working at point A. And we're talking about grass growing, Councilman Worthy. If you ride around your district, you might want folks from the cemetery to come help us cut grass that we're so far behind. And so if we take the limited resources that we have and put them somewhere else, it continues to grow in other places. So of course, priorities are what priorities are. Jeff's done a great job, I think, at the cemetery in the last two, three weeks. Jen has done a great job moving personnel around to get Forest Cemetery probably a little better shape than it's been in a long time. And so I just think you might want to ride over there yourself and do a ride through it and see how things have improved in the last couple of weeks with what she's done with that.
Okay, well, that's great, but that is really great. And I'm glad you said that, because I will go over there and ride through myself, even though it's not my district, but I would be more happy. Yes.
I'd like to add some insight there. You're correct. I did organize a volunteer cleanup day Sunday before last at Sixth Street Cemetery and Forest Cemetery, and I've gotten a lot of feedback. Monday morning, it's my understanding that the entire, essentially, the entire Parks and Rec staff were on site this past Monday, not yesterday, but the Monday before, following our volunteer cleanup day, and that they spent all day out there and a portion of Tuesday out there. And I've received dozens of compliments on how great it looks and the response to the outcry over the state that it was in. So I also want to give a huge kudos to Jen Weddington and the Parks and Rec Department, because again, I've received dozens of calls after they were out there that said it looks like an entirely new place, and a lot of people are very, very happy with the results of their efforts last week. So.
Great job. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hilton. You know, I'm always the person who puts people on the spot, so.
And again, if there's things that need to be done at Riverwalk Park, I'm sure just give it to Jen, and she'll get with us. If it's more than they can handle as far as elevation with tree crews or different machinery and some things we may have that they don't have, I'm sure we can work well together.
Okay. Okay. Is there anything else to come before us? If not, we'll take a short break until eleven o'clock, and we'll start the council meeting. Good morning. I'm Cynthia Toles, President of the Gaston City Council, and we're meeting today by teleconference. Today's council meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and can also be viewed later on Comcast Channel ninety-nine, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ava Nelson for the role call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Worthy?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today, and Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. And I'm going to ask everyone to bow for the invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have blessed us with, and we have requests that we bring before you today, Lord. We pray for those that are victims of the recent storms, that have lost lives and property. We pray that you would be with them, help them to heal in the days to come. Or we pray for those who are sick. There are many that we know that are, and the ones that have lost loved ones, that you would just be with those people in a special way. We pray for your guidance today as the city council moves through the meeting and conducts business of the city, and we just pray for your guidance in all the decisions that are made. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
I'd like to begin today's meeting with an update from the Emergency Management Agency Director, Deborah Gaither, and next we'll have an update from the Fire Chief Reed of Gaston.
Madam President, are we going to do the pledge of allegiance?
No, I'll tell you offline. We look back at some of, well, I can tell you now, we look back at some of our meetings from our last teleconference, and we didn't do it. So we just left it off this time.
Okay, I just knew we did it last week. I just wanted to make sure to turn it over. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Gaither?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Well, let me see. I've got a request here. Start my video. There it is. Okay. I want to say first of all, kudos to our voluntary organization, Active in Disaster, of whom Craig Scott is our chairperson. They've assisted at least ten families that have evacuated to our area from Louisiana from Hurricane Ida's aftermath, and we just really appreciate all that every one of the departments and agencies do to support those efforts. Then, we want to talk about vaccinate Gaston. I believe that vaccinate Gaston has been a success. This week, we had another one hundred and twenty-two. So that brings us up to approximately one thousand, one hundred and eighty-five. So that's a great number. But we need to let everybody know, and this is very important, so spread the word, starting next week, if you're going to get Moderna or Pfizer, and you're going to use a vaccinate Gaston voucher, it's the last week that you can get your first dose and then make your last dose fall before the deadline of October fifteenth. So, did I make sense of that? Because it sounded like it was jumbled to me. But you want to make sure that if you're going to participate and vaccinate Gaston, and you're not using Johnson and Johnson, that you get your shot this week or next week, so that you fall into the rotation for your next shot before October fifteenth. So we need to make sure that we get that information out. I know that here at EMA, we have one staff member that is returning this week after being a caregiver for a COVID positive spouse. So we'll be glad to get him back in rotation here, and we're glad that she's much better. Our total cases now totaled throughout all of Etowah County, seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven. We also have a total number of deaths at three ninety-four. Then, new cases this week, four hundred and forty-six. So that's still a very, very high number. That number did go down a couple of percentages from the previous week, so that's a good sign. Positivity rates for this week is twenty-six point two percent, and that is down from the last two weeks. There is also the current level of community transmissions, which is in the high category, but we've gone to the low portion of the high category. What we're going to be looking for in the next ten to fourteen days is any uptick in the numbers again due to Labor Day gatherings and get-togethers. I know there were a large number of those. We just want to continue to ask everybody to wear your mask, social distance, make sure you do anything that you can to help stop the spread, and we get this over with as soon as possible. You know, it may never be calm. We may have to always have a booster shot, but we do that now with our flu, and we've done that with, you know, chicken pox and everything else all through the years. So I think that we can eventually get back to some type of normalcy if we can just nip it in the bud for just a little bit. So we ask everybody to keep trying and keep pushing. Here at EMA, we want to send our thoughts and prayers to you, Councilman Reed. We want you to know that you are in our thoughts and prayers, and we'll be remembering you. So, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I do. Ms. Gaither, I want to recognize you and your folks and say thank you. I contacted you last week with Salvation Army Shelter, and we discussed that. Just so everybody knows, I mean, there's two shelters for homeless people in the four county area, and they're both in Gaston, the Love Center and the Salvation Army. And so I had an occasion to hear from the commander, the major at Salvation Army, had some positive test results, and they live in a dormitory lifestyle over there. So I called Ms. Gaither, and she got right on it and handled things, and the proper protocol is in place. What impressed me the most was, you know, there's a three-ring binder in her office somewhere behind her that is specifically for what I called her about. So she's not doing this on the fly. This has all been planned out many years ago and is in a very stable environment, and they know what they're doing. And so we're in great hands and are forever grateful for all the things that you and your team do at the EMA. It's just, it makes me feel comfortable knowing that we have that kind of a resource here in Etowah County, that you're not making things up as you go, that it's already been planned out and vetted, probably with other agencies. agencies across the state. So I know that y'all are doing, when those things arise, that you're doing the best that you can. And I think that would also go into Craig Scott and the folks at VOA that you just mentioned also. I think they were involved in helping the Department of Public Health, Mary Gomillion and her team. So thank you very much. And if you have any comment about that, that's fine. If not, then that's fine too.
Well, thank you. Anytime I get a chance to brag on some of our agencies, I'll be glad to do that. Josh took the ball with that. And then he, Mary asked Lori Lloyd there with the Health Department to visit the Salvation Army, do a site assessment, and then set up testing. So they moved into action really quick and did everything they could to see if we can stop that spread in that close, those close quarters quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to mention Josh, as my memory comes back, I did speak with him first, and he was right on top of it, knew exactly who to call, what to do. And then you called me after that. So thanks to Josh Tanner.
Chief Reed?
Good morning, Madam President. Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Started, Councilman Reed, on behalf of myself and the Fire Department, our deepest condolences. And if we can do anything, please let us know.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. I really do.
Yes, sir. Back to our COVID report. We're holding steady on our PUI and COVID numbers. We had 25 patient contacts in the previous week on patients under investigation and COVID. We're running at a total of 126 for the last two-month period. We do, however, have a little unhappy news to report. We're at our highest level yet of employees with COVID. I have five employees out right now with COVID-19. I have a couple more testing. I have three employees out for exposure. And I have two employees out that have children with COVID-19. So these are our worst numbers so far. I'm hoping that this is a fluke. We haven't changed any of our sanitizing procedures. We are still wearing our PPE. So we will evaluate this as we go. But that's all we have for this week.
Are our hospitals still about the same?
Yes, ma'am. The hospitals are still about the same. The, one of the hospitals has went down. They're not at capacity. They're within one or two of capacity. The other's still at capacity. Both hospitals, unless something has changed this morning, remain on diversion in their ERs. So I still encourage everyone that can, if they can go to an urgent care center for something minor versus going to the ER, I encourage them to do that.
What about the ICU beds?
The ICUs are still full.
Okay.
I have a question, Doc.
Yes.
Uh, Chief, can you tell me how, what's the percentage of firefighters that's been vaccinated?
We don't have a percentage because we just don't have that information. When someone gets vaccinated, they may not tell me they're vaccinated. And I just have the list of our initial vaccination officers. But we're thinking it's between 55 and 60%.
Okay. And can you also tell me, is it getting better about the wait time for ambulances when they come into the hospitals?
That's actually a day-to-day thing because you have a lot of things you have to keep into consideration. Not only number of COVID patients, but what days are heavy dialysis transports. And, you know, you could have some unplanned runs, some traumas or something come in. But overall, the wait time is about the same right now. It's, we're still have ambulances that'll, as we call it, sit on the wall for a longer period of time than we want to. We've had a couple of times this week where we've waited 30 or 40 minutes on an ambulance.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. If there's not any other questions, I'd like to thank both Ms. Gaither and Chief Reed for their information that they're giving us and keeping us updated on what's going on around the city and the county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we will continue our agenda for today. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting that was held August the 31st.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Did I get it?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of August the 27th through the September the 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations. I don't believe we have any. Unfinished business. Our first item is the rezoning property located at 107 and 109 Virgin Street in District 7, from residential 1, family resident district to a B1 neighborhood business district. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading, and the owner requested the rezoning in order to expand the daycare facility. The planning commission recommended approval. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yeah.
Motion carries to adopt.
The next ordinance is a rezoning property located at 1627 Gaston Avenue in District 3 from an R2 mall, a family resident district to a B2 general business district. And this ordinance was presented last week for first reading. The owner requested the rezoning because a potential buyer wants to use the property as a contractor store's yard. The planning commission recommend denial. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Madam President, maybe we could have a motion to consider the ordinance, and then we can still record a vote that way?
Right. I asked for a motion to consider.
So moved. Second.
All right.
Just to clarify.
Okay. Go ahead.
The ordinance, the ordinance is worded for approval of the rezoning. So if you wish for the rezoning to happen, you'll vote yes. If you want to vote against the rezoning, you'll vote no. Okay.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
No.
Councilman Wilson?
No.
Councilman Back?
No.
Councilman Worthy?
No.
Councilman Williams?
No.
And Councilwoman Toles?
No.
The ordinance, it fails to be adopted, so therefore the rezoning is denied.
All right. Our next resolution is amending Section 1 of Resolution Number R43-04 as amended by Resolution Number R238-10 and R318-17 regarding steps in the pay plan. The pay plan consists of 25 pay ranges with 48 steps in each range. There's a difference of 1 and 1/4% between each step. This resolution decreases the number of steps in each range from 50 to 48 by removing five steps with the lowest pay and adding three steps at the top. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Same.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, I just want to add that I've spoken to several firefighters and in what is, again, another selfless act, I think, on behalf of our five firefighters. They obviously have some very serious concerns about their compensation and how this will impact their organizational structure. But they've agreed not to voice any general objection to this and not try to stand in the way of the other city employees receiving a pay raise. So I just want to say thank you to the firefighters for not resisting this and allow it to go through so that every city employee can experience that pay raise. And I'll make the promise to those firefighters that we will continue to work on their compensation throughout this budget process over the next couple of weeks. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is ordering a change, Order Number 1 for bid number 3408 for the Alabama City Center Parking Project. And this is to reconcile additions and deletions from the changes that occurred during the construction. The amount is $14,170.66, thereby adjusting the total contract with Bedwell and Horton Excavation LLC to $623,550.49. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Same.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Greater Housing Authority. And this continues the community-oriented policing program in the seven public housing communities for the fiscal year 2022. The city will be reimbursed for the hourly rate of four officers. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
We have a first reading, and ordinance adopted the American Rescue Plan Fund Budget. And this ordinance approved the budget for the $24,42,734 in the American Rescue Plan Fund allotted to the city. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading. And the council will vote on it next week. I would like to request to suspend the rules for it to be voted on today.
Madam President, I didn't know that we were going to ask for that. What is the reason for us to suspend the rules? What's the justification for it? Why can't we just wait and vote on it next week?
So we can get it in operation. We can. I just asked to, I just asked to suspend the rules. Do you have a reason for not suspending the rules?
Yes, ma'am, because the rules are in place for a reason. We put these rules in a place for how we evaluate these ordinances. If there's not an extraordinary reason, if it's not going to affect the budgetary process, I don't understand why we wouldn't just follow the established rules and have a first reading and then vote the following week. I mean, again, this is more.
Go ahead.
Can I just say that I think it's more or less to get the wheels in motion for the employees of this city. That's all there is to it. If no undercurrent, any backstabbing or anything else. Every once in a while, we have to do this for the betterment of the people. That's it.
I understand that. And I certainly don't want to stand in the way of the employees of the city receiving compensation of any kind. I just, again, I think it looks terrible that we continue to do this when we don't have to, just as a matter of general policy. Again, there are reasons why we have a first reading and then a vote the following week. It allows everybody to consume this information and process it and formulate opinions on it. And I think anytime we deviate from Robert's Rules of Order, which we talk about a lot here, it should be for extraordinary reasons. And it seems to me that from time to time, we casually utilize this suspension of the rules rather than using it for extraordinary reasons. So it's obvious.
So yours, go ahead.
Well, if you're a no vote, then I will retract. I will retract if he's a no vote.
Councilman Williams, no problem. No, Councilman Williams, and then we'll just move on to new business. Councilman Williams?
Yeah, please, you know, please note that there is money within this ARP budget for our responders and firefighters. So again, I think if we're going to talk about the need to address compensation as related to this group, I think it's worth noting that there is some intent within the ARP budget to address compensation for that group. So.
And I agree. And again, I'll, again, I'll say that.
That may have been the reason why Madam President brought that up today.
And if that's the case, then I'll certainly concede. Because obviously, as an elected official, I'm not going to get painted into a corner where I'm trying to keep firefighters and police officers from getting money. So with that said, and it being framed in that context, then I will certainly give no objections to immediate consideration of $24 million worth of federal funds. But let's just move ahead and fast-track it.
Now, what I would do is I withdraw. I'll withdraw my suspension and we'll move on to next business, to new business.
Okay.
One thing, Councilman Worthy, I know that you were going to bring up.
Yeah.
The library.
Right. I got the message.
Okay, but we'll hold off on that. So is there any other new business?
I have one, Madam President.
Yes.
Comes from the legal department, requested by the, excuse me, by the engineering department. This is a resolution to approve a 10% city match. Let me read here. It's a 10% city match for safety improvements to the railroad crossing on US Highway 431, Highway 278, SR-1 at 6th Street North and East Gaston. This is also known as the Goodyear Railroad Crossing on Meagan Boulevard. I think is the more common nomenclature for that road. The total construction estimate is $350,000. This is a 90 to 10 match with ALDOT, Alabama Department of Transportation paying 90%, which is $315,000, and the City of Gaston matching 10%, which is $35,000. This is to make that railroad crossing on all six lanes, I suppose, a lot smoother than it is. So this is, this is a good one. So this is a, this is a good one. So I've asked for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Okay, this is for unanimous consent to consider the resolution today as an item of new business. Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Unanimous consent has been given for consideration today.
A move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. Like to ask for unanimous consent to consider resolution authorizing agreement with CDG Engineers and Associates, Inc.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Okay, um this motion is for immediate consideration under new business today. Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
We have unanimous consent and consider today.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Do a little discussion.
Discussion.
Councilman?
Clerk, take the vote. Yes.
I was, I was gonna say this for construction, engineering, and inspection services on an as needed basis, home call, basis.
Okay. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Uh, is uh Ms. Ross on the line?
Hey, to Ms. Ross.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, did you say you needed the uh, uh one about the Ralpha House today?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Oh, okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank.
I didn't need anything today.
Okay, all right. Is there, is there any other new business? All right, if there's no, uh, is there any department reports? Committees, boards? Uh, we have remarks by, comments by the mayor, council. Is the mayor on? Probably. Councilman, we.
Glad y'all got that passed, that's great. Uh, gonna be good for all the employees and everybody else, I think, involved, so uh did a good job.
Thank you. Councilman William?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, do you want to take the, Heath, Heath Williamson, are you, are you there? If you are, turn your camera on. Hey, I want people to, to see probably one of the hardest working individuals at City Hall. We've got a lot of good employees at City Hall, but he uh definitely is one of the hardest working individuals at City Hall. And uh, and his job as city engineer in many regards is thankless. Um, he takes it from uh, from a lot of different angles and continues to press forward and do his job. Uh, today's passing of the Sixth Street Railroad uh project is an example of uh many of us fielding calls, receiving complaints, having to go look at people's cars where they bent a rim or uh sustained some level of damage as if an elected official can do anything about it. Uh, but Heath can do something about it and he took our complaints as we relay them and uh, and turned this into a tangible project. So Heath, thank you so much. Uh, and uh, thank you for uh navigating the process to get us some results here.
Thank you, sir.
Right. Um, and that's just one example. Uh, I, I could spend a lot of time highlighting projects that he's done for us, but I'll save that for a later meeting. Um, Councilman Reed? We're praying for you and continuing to pray for you. Um, it's um, it's one thing to hear about numbers and see numbers, but uh it's, it's another thing to see this awful pandemic impact people that you know and love and respect at a great deal. So, so again, we'll continue to pray for you and your family. Um, I think I echo the sentiment of this council. If there's ever anything we can do to uh, to help and support you, please don't hesitate. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Derek. I tell you what, y'all have, and I'm much appreciated, I really do.
Councilman Back?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I want to echo two things that Councilman Williams touched on. Of course, uh being your family and yourself, uh you've been in all of our prayers for many days now and uh will continue to be so. Uh, I think you're loved by all of us and uh respected and uh we've sure loved and respected Barbara. And uh, just thank you for all you do. Thank you for all you've done, your decades of service and, and Barbara's service too. That does not go unnoticed and uh, or unappreciated. And uh echo the sentiments with Heath Williamson. I, I speak with Heath almost every week. Uh, and he is, Derek, you, you summed it up perfectly. Uh, super hardworking guy, we're lucky to, lucky to have Heath as the City of Gaston engineer. There's so much that he does that nobody ever sees, but you receive the pleasure of what he does uh all across our city. And uh, we have an outstanding uh engineering department led by, led by Heath Williamson and uh just, just very appreciative of the work that is, that is done there. Um, uh, want to uh echo with uh Councilman Wilson and in agreement uh about our fire department, first responders and things, that there's some work left to be done uh in, in regards to our, our budget and all these things. So uh, you know, it's a fifty three million dollar budget. Uh, if we entertained and uh met all the budget requests, it, it would far exceed fifty three million dollars. And what that means is we have to make hard decisions. And so hard decisions are made every twelve months in regards to the budget. Uh, you have to meet certain demands that are, that are uh right in front of you and then you have to also think uh down the road. And this is a, a time that we've never experienced before. All the tens of millions of federal dollars that have poured into our city and to our county, you know, all three of our school systems in Etowah County have received millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars have gone to our local school system, gone to our county government, and gone to all of our cities. Uh, but that's a one time gift and you can't budget that for future use. So you have to be very careful and make sure that you're only spending it for things that, that you can see today and that you, you can't pencil it in for future budgets when that revenue won't, won't be there. So there's the balancing act. Uh, I, I do commend Lisa Ross for the work that she's done, Mayor's Office, Carrie Payne, everybody that's been involved. It's, it's not as easy as it looks. And uh, and there are hard decisions and there's always going to be some that aren't going to be happy. And that's just, I think that's the reality of any budget in any city, county, state, maybe an even private business. So bear with us as, as we work through these things. It's uh, it's, it's something that I think we all have our hearts in the right place and uh, and, and we're working to try to do the best for the taxpayers of the, of the city of Gaston. Um, you know, the American Rescue Plan has done just that, it's been sent to rescue America. And so we're using that money to try to uh, uh do the very things that are, are needed. There are some rules and there are some places where we can't spend that money. And so we have to take all that into consideration. So uh, but just, just keep in mind that this, I think everybody's heart is in the right place. Nobody's trying not to do something, we're trying to do something. We're looking at it from a positive standpoint, but yet trying to keep the balance of the, the budget balance in a way that we don't overspend or overcommit. And then we run into problems six, eight months down the road. So just uh, thank you for your time today and uh, still want to end with uh, let's, let's uh keep being in our thoughts and prayers. And one last thing, I just got a text of, of Major Edmonds, who's the head of the Salvation Army here in Gaston in Etowah County, has just been appointed to head up the Salvation Army's uh recovery effort in New Orleans. So Major Edmonds and his wife will be down there for two weeks. Uh, so I, we offer our thoughts and prayers of safety and protection for Major Edmonds. Uh, he's only been here for about a year. He came from Louisville, Kentucky, so he's new and he came in the middle of COVID. He really hasn't had a chance to be out and be seen uh as normal. But uh, I've met with him numerous times, served on that board. He is a, he and his wife are fantastic people, uh do a wonderful job for our community and uh, and I'm very proud that the Salvation Army uh would uh tap him as the person that they are going to have to lead their recovery effort in uh New Orleans. As, as we all have seen on the news, New Orleans is taking a terrible hit and they're in really bad shape down there. So thoughts and prayers to Major Edmonds. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Reed?
I think I've said about it all, just absolutely thank everybody, I really mean that.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, uh just echo what the other council people have said about uh Mr. Reed, Councilman Reed, which we uh praying for you. And anything we could do, just uh let us know. I know it's a tough situation, but God got you. That's all I have.
Uh, Councilman Wilson?
Um, I, I don't have anything other than to just say, Ben, I'm glad you're back. Um, I, I consider it a privilege to know you and have the opportunity to meet Ms. Barbara. Um, and I'm here for you if you need anything from me. That's it.
Just like to remind everybody that this coming Saturday, there will be a recognition of our uh fallen heroes for nine eleven at the uh, uh area that's designated and it'll be Saturday, nine eleven at eleven o'clock. So inviting the public to come in remembrance of those who lost their lives during eleven. In fact, this is the twentieth uh anniversary of nine eleven. So if you uh can come out, definitely social distance, def- definitely wear a mask, but come out to remember those who've lost their lives and their families. If there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In me.
Moved.
All right, we are, yes.